35 clicks later.
Yeah, it's not allowing me to stream, so. I will do, yeah, sorry for the delay.
You can't see what's going on.
Yeah, it's not very helpful because this is Kevin's account and absolutely we always use this.
We're going to have to abandon.
May have to abandon. We are recording it, so I'll be able to put it up afterwards. That's not a major problem. It's just apologies. Yeah, it'll take me too long to sort that out. So let's let's just crack on. Sorry about the.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Woodley Town Council Planning and Community Committee. Being held today, Tuesday, the 27th of August, 2024. Woodley Town Council meetings are now recorded with recording streamed live and stored on the Town Council's YouTube channel. By virtue of attending this meeting, you consent to having your image and audio recorded for this purpose. If you do not wish for your image and audio to be recorded, then please do not stay for the meeting. For those of you in attendance, we're not expecting the fire drill tonight. So if you hear the fire alarm, please head to the nearest fire exit and congregate at the fire assembly point by the Oakwood Centre at the front of Woodford Park. Now, we have a little bit of housekeeping to go through first of all before reaching the plans. So please bear with us and we're coming. So first of all, do we have any apologies, Matt?
Yes, we have apologies from councillors Guttridge, Hawkins, Lewis, Stone and Taylor. Councillor Hawkins is attending virtually, so he's on there tonight. Captain Lewis may try and attend virtually later if he gets back in time, but I'll note it down if he does.
Okay, thank you. And declarations of interest, do we have any?
Yes, I have a financial interest in application number 241976 on page 16, because that's my house. And I will leave the ring.
Yep, okay, I will ask that when we come up to that item on the meeting. Right, on page three, we have the minutes of the Plen and Community Committee held on the 23rd of July. Are there any comments on those minutes or is it in order for me to sign those off as a correct item? Thank you. I will sign those at the end of the meeting. On page 11, we have actions and follow-ups. 94 to speed watch. We'll have a discussion on that later on in the agenda. Have we heard anything to talk from councillor Stone or?
I don't have further updates on that.
No. But I mean, if you'll take it, I will have words with Bill Stone on his return from holiday and we'll chase that up and try and get some action in place for that for the next meeting. 115, the local plan, what's these? Is there any further progress on that?
I mean, the update since the last meeting is that I've now found on the working website that they've advised their process, they follow their process. The scheduled adoption will be December 2025. I understand there will obviously be other steps in the way, other consultations probably on the final plan design, et cetera. But yes, it is December 2025. They're looking at the moment to adopt that if it's if it all goes.
As for clarification, talks about benefit of the Woodley Design Statement. Didn't think we had one.
Yeah, we have. It's published on the working website and it's obviously meant to be referred to in planning applications for Woodley. This was discussed a few meetings ago.
Can I suggest, since I should have known about this, that's my fault, you send a copy to all members of the committee.
It is published on our website if you want to view it.
Send us a copy, email please.
I can email you.
I know, I know there's a trend to push everybody to cover the website, cover the website. I'm 72 years old. I'm stressed. One, this is a paper please.
Minute 165, that relates to the grants which won't be discussed until January 25. So I think we can look past that. 172, what's the situation with the town council notice boards, Matt?
Obviously, that's been planned as a project in-house to replace them at the moment with the the team's current workload and their staffing levels were lower sort of at the beginning of the summer. They're obviously not not in a position at the moment to do that, but as soon as they are ready to pick up on that project, the locations of those is planning to bring back here for consideration.
Right. And Carol, what's the situation with the cycling and walking group? Minute 188. You still haven't had another meeting?
I can find a little update on as well. At the last meeting, the 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 action that came of it was to start designing some travel routes around Woodley. And to achieve that, we were looking at Woking's My Journey team to provide us with some large-scale maps of Woodley, which we wouldn't have the ability to produce in-house. They tried, the team were very slow in getting that because of illness of Woking and there was only one person in that team and they were running beat the street at the same time. It was very difficult for them. They did send some versions apparently that were meant to arrive by the 25th of July. They didn't arrive with us. I've chased them again. They're getting some more copies to us. As soon as that they arrive, we'll then be able to arrange another meeting of this of the the group to start looking at those active travel routes and work with My Journey to develop those.
With respect though, this minute is applied to school parking.
It is. So what was agreed as planning was, there's been, there were some issues with school parking that were raised over a number of meetings and it was, it was pushed to the working group to raise that with My Journey at a meeting when they were holding My Journey. They had one meeting and it wasn't raised. That was several months.
Can I suggest, it's pointless having that, because it was meant to be raised at the next meeting, it wasn't, for whatever reason. And now that group is concentrating on these active travel routes. I don't have a problem with that, but it does mean that 188 is a meaningless action because it's never going to happen, at least for a very, very long time. And so what I would suggest is you close it. The cycling and walking group concentrate on the active travel. What do you think, Carol? You're much more embedded into that.
I don't see an issue leaving that on there because it reminds us that we do need to have that school parking. There's another way of having a reminder, quite happy.
But realistically, realistically, when is that going to be? No, we haven't had a meeting. There hasn't been a meeting there from 25th of May. The reason being, as you pointed out, that they're concentrating on this active travel, that's going to take, I would guess, at least 12 months. So.
I think the hope was that the the working group would sit down with those maps, would start designing the routes out and then get My Journey in quite early on to to help develop that. It could be that it's a couple of months. It could be that it's three, four months before My Journey come back in. At that point, we would, we would obviously aim to add this to the agenda so it can be picked up this time, but it's up to you.
Well, okay, I just.
Now, when is the next planned meeting any?
The next meeting will be arranged once those A0 or A1 scar maps have been provided to us, because without those, we haven't got, haven't got the materials to be able to work on.
Okay, just to close off on this, bearing on what Carol says, and she's much more embedded in it. Could we add on the progress update, a summary of what I've just said? So it's clearly here that it won't happen until that, until the active travel routes have been completed. That is the progress, even though it's no progress, if you know what I mean.
I think we want to support to actually add an update to the progress update to say that the next move in Woodley, working party will be considering the maps once we receive them and so the school parking will be dealt with to date.
It's fine.
Yeah, I mean, from my own point of view, it's pointless us discussing every meeting of the planning and community committee if it's not going to be looked at for another six months. So in that respect, I sympathise with what councillor Baker is is saying. What I would suggest is that this be left on the minutes until our next meeting, then hopefully we can discuss it again, but taking it off when we've got.
Well, chairman, there is a proposal.
Also a member.
There's a joint proposal effectively, or Carol's, you know, what I said, modify what Carol said. And I would like to propose that that is what goes in there. If that's okay with you, Carol. So I think that's reasonable and it's recording the fact that something else is getting.
Someone got a motion then.
Yeah, I have a present. We add to the progress update another one, we say we'll be looking at maps once we receive, which means the school parking will be dealt with to date.
I'll second that.
Right, is everyone in favour? I mean, no, you're in favour of that? Anyone against?
We don't discuss each of these items. Probably the best way is to tell he's got clearly a map. The progress update, it will be based on the basis. So now go over that all the time, which is why.
That's right. I mean, the other item, next item is coming up there. Really, they'll be covered later, later on. The heritage issue comes up in when the next edition of heritage due. Is there any further progress update on the EV charging space from WBC?
No, the update is here. It's the latest update. These updates are up to date as of last Thursday and I don't have any further updates since Thursday on on themselves.
As far as the other items are concerned, they're all, they're updated. So move on to the next item, which is the current planning applications. Now, we can actually do this in numerical order for now, because we have someone regarding the first one, which is 241301, the tennis courts at Silver Fox Crescent, which is a full planning application for the proposed direction of one self-built detached dwelling. Does anyone have any comments on that application? Yeah, sorry, yes, did you?
This is just an amendment to the previous one, which you guys were happy with.
I mean, the application was approved by this committee back in June and I see no reason why we should change our opinion.
That's not quite true. This is a separate application. It's not amended.
It is amended.
I don't think so.
The numbers exactly the same.
It doesn't say revision on any of the information from Woking, but it is the same planning application. Normally, if it was considered as a new application, it would be given a brand new application. So it is a bit of an oddity. I've never seen Woking deal with it in this way.
If you look at any of the, when there is one application, it tells you, it says on the website, et cetera. So this is, this is a deviation from what they're normal practice.
So I mean, what is, what?
So what is the, what is the proposal then?
The, the, the best way to sit on the, on the site plans, it's a removal of a garage. So you'll see on the original plan, there is a garage building.
Here, from, from back in the past.
Yeah, so this is the original application that came in. This committee submitted no objections to a garage there and on the new plan, that garage has been removed.
I'll follow it now. Yeah, that's a bit confusing. That's not what it says here. It says for the proposed erection of one. Self-built detached building. That's not saying remove the garage.
It's almost changing, revising the plans and and the the application on Woking's site is listed as application station status recommendation made, which means no decision has been made by Woking on that original application. With no decision having been made, it gives Woking the ability to then receive amended plans and and.
I thought actually the original was for three buildings.
That's a separate, there were separate applications for those three buildings in a different space on that same lot of land.
So this is where there was an application for four buildings.
This is, no, this is one extra. There was one extra. So originally, originally, there was, a long time ago, there was an application for three.
This is completely confusing. And can you please capture this and send it to the head of planning? Because nothing to you, there's nothing over you. It's an absolute dog.
There's no, there's no doubt about it. Original applications for for four or five houses on the.
Yeah, the original application was for four, that then reduced to three, that was done individually with a space for an extra one, that extra one came in after those three. Agreed, so the point.
Approved by you guys before. That is literally taking the garage out on recommendations working and upmarket.
Do you understand why?
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah.
What's on that website is not what you're saying. That's what it is. It's saying it's erecting one new building. It's not saying removing garage.
They extended their timeline on that one application or the amendment. You got it right, but I hear what you're saying. Otherwise, I was surprised that it had to come again to this, when it was only an amendment. But and if it were to be passed, as you say, it's all seems very.
But from, from my point of view, with us having approved the application in June. Carol.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. There was no objections on the, on the website. And I think one of them actually appreciated that. So it had already been decided under the ship had sailed on that one. So if that highlights a habit, it was not mine, it was agreed and now we just kept the detail. But yes, there was some confusion, I think. It would have been so easy if they would have initially got what you're checking for.
I mean, I don't see how we can change our comments from June. On the, on the removal of one part of the application.
But that's stuff that we can comment on what's in front of us, which is the erection of one new building. That's all we can do. If you were saying yes garage, you would be absolutely right, but it is saying one new building. And so for, for me, I think this is overdeveloped. I, I think it's squeezing another one in with all the impact on it. So I don't support this extra building.
Sorry, can I say something to that? You wrote it in paper last time.
I mean.
The point is, we can only comment on what's in front of us. What's in front of us is not an amendment. I take what you're saying, but it's physically not an amendment. It would say on there it's amendment. If it was just removing the garage, it would say removing the garage, which shouldn't come here anyway. It's just removing garage. So yours, yours confuses everything else. So all we can do is comment on what's here in front of us. And it is asking for lawful, I mean, approval. We don't give approvals. Yes, they're looking for one new sub-built detached dwelling. And on the basis of that, no garage, it's amendment. On the basis of that, I don't support it.
Just, I would just say that the notification letter received, whilst it says full planning application for proposed direction, underneath it says we've received revised additional plans for the above application. The revised details show revised plans showing removal of detached garage building and submission of additional tree information.
So if somebody just typed this incorrectly, it's for this.
It could be that someone's tried to.
That, that is the original proposal and the original proposal's no determination was made by Woking Borough Council. The applicant has revised the plans and Woking have resent that notification out because it's the same application name, but they then advise us, as in the proposal remains the same, but they would just advise underneath that's the revision to the plans and the plans that are now on there show where that revision is and what that is.
Yeah, I can't say it often enough. If it's an amendment, you look at anything. For instance, you look at the Travis Perkins amendment.
So that's an amendment to an application that was determined.
You can look on there and it will have all the history documents. Does this have that historical document that says four buildings?
No, because they were different. They, they were different. So those four buildings went in and were, that application was refused by Woking and.
Each one building was put in, two buildings were first, second, third. So there was four applications.
Originally, originally, an application for four was put in that was refused.
Four applications.
Then, because that decision was made and refused, three new applications came in for three separate plots for those three, which had separate, which left this space. Once they had been approved, another application was submitted for this build, which was considered a few months ago and no objections raised. But no determination has been made on that yet by Woking and they're, they've obviously admitted this.
So why are we even looking at it if we've already made?
Because, 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 because the plans, because the plans that this committee considered three months ago and made a determination have changed before the determination, you're being asked to review again and that is those two.
Well, look, we, we can, we can go on business all night long.
Is it that, that comment said that attached with the new application, which were you?
All of, on here, you'll see all of the previous applications in relation to this specific application, which was submitted in May, along with superseded site plans and new updated site plans to show the revisions that are being made to that live application.
Same reference and same.
Same application because it has.
I'm going to call this discussion to an end and we'll have a vote on it. All those in favour of approving this application?
Because it includes.
All those against?
Abstain.
And one abstention. Okay, so but we'll send that off as approved the same as last time. But can we ensure comment is made to the Department of Woking and the application and the recently implemented medicine? Okay.
Right, thank you for that. When do you start building, darling? When, when's the month to start building?
Soon as you get permission.
What about number two and three?
One, two, three, the salt service. One lot's going through the mine together to. Well, the other one's on the mine. I'm keeping either number four, number three for myself. If I get number four, then I'll keep that for myself and sell lot three.
So is it true, self builders, that they're going to physically do it or are they going to subcontract it?
It is because one person that's, that's going through the mine, it's building itself. It's already done on itself.
Well done for that. So we need more self builders, whether.
Right, thank you. Right, well, moving on to application 241714. It's a full application for proposed change of use of unit three, the ground floor, to a restaurant in connection with unit four. Now, this relates to shop units three and four at the London Bell Centre off Hurricane Way. I looked at it and personally couldn't see any problems.
It's a big yes for me. It's Juncor, Juncor, and they are so successful. And there's even a positive comment in the comments. Parking's no problem. It's needed to bring life to that.
I mean, certainly I saw no objections to it in favour. So unless there's contrary opinion, Carol.
I stick around with my hand. I'm no objection. I just always concern the restaurants. I think all the smells are actually dealt with properly. There is inefficient uses. I'm sure they will be, to be clear.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes walking past an Indian restaurant, the smell is absolutely lovely. Right, okay, so we're happy with that. Item 241755, which is 14 Glendam Road, household application for the proposed single-story rear extension plus garage conversion to create a book accommodation. Again, I looked at this and couldn't physically see any reason why it shouldn't go ahead. But any comments, Amanda? So we can say approved on that one then. 241834 is 14 Redding Road, which is household application for proposed direction of a single-story rear extension following demolition of the existing conservatory. Again, in my mind, quite straightforward. Yep. 241835, 21 Austin Road, Woodley. Household application for proposed single-story front extension, single-story side extension and part single-story rear extension along with changes to fenestration. And one thing I noticed, this, it's a very large extension and it's going right up to the boundary line.
Which is perfectly valid.
Yeah, but I just wonder whether it's going to be overbearing on the street frontage. Does anyone else have any comments at all?
I agree with you because it almost looks like two houses anyway.
Yes, it does.
But again, I don't know if that's an official objection. I was wondering if it was over.
I mean, I thought also there's no other front extensions visible in the plans. I mean, I I thought also there's no other front extensions uh visible in the uh plans. Um, and Woking and can be a bit funny on front um extensions. Um. There's nothing there other than you know, a very large extension. So unless people are uh very strongly against it, I'm happy to approve it. Carol, Pavindra.
I think there is concern, but it's well, get on those development sites.
Right.
It depends how many of us want to make that comment.
Okay, so if you can just make the um, I mean, it is possibly overbearing, but um. But just so that we, you know, we've highlighted it's a very large extension. Um, but on both, we don't see any problems. Um, right, item two, four, one, eight, six, five, twelve Shepherd's Hill. Um, full application for proposed three bedroom detached dwelling with associated parking and landscaping. Um. Now, what's of sorts of these members, Carol?
Yes, I'm going to pull up the plan of the location. My concerns, well, I know how busy that roundabout is. Um, the two parking spaces they show, they've had two. I think that's one that shows the two.
I'll just zoom, I'll just zoom in a bit for you.
The two cars, they're very tight to the side of the edge of the road. No one at it. They're going to be coming out on that A four from the standing stand. Um, and look at the picture, one of them will be reversing out on C A four.
It covers it, it's a turntable. It's a turntable.
They're just going to run into the place on that way.
It is a, it is a large extension for the lot.
Well, I think it's interesting. The building in the garden.
Yeah, it's a new building.
Yes.
In the back garden. Um, I've got to agree, agree with that. I mean, the comments I've made, um, seems to be back garden backing onto roundabout danger to traffic.
Absolutely.
Even if there's a a roundabout there to turn the cars around, it's still going to have to go out onto a very, very busy, fast moving roundabout.
Yeah, yes. And in the, you know, I I know that's probably not to scale, but those two, that's you, Roger, two cars are very tight to each other. And and you want to get on the round, the turntable, you're going to have to be very, very tight. So, like, you know, you go in and it.
Yeah, but any car turning into that space is going to be prone to causing an accident on that roundabout. Because traffic won't, they'll see the indication, they think it's going to continue around the roundabout. Yeah, sorry.
David, hi, yeah, I'm just looking at the plans here. Yes, I agree with what you've said, but if you look adjacent to those properties, they already go into their parking from that roundabout. So it's just another property, isn't it?
What space, we didn't know.
None, none of those, Robert, have have a need for a turntable.
No, they haven't at the moment. No, it's just, I mean, I'm looking at the one that says thirty two and twenty six. Am I looking at the right place?
Yes.
Where are all those trees on? I I would object personally, I would object on highways, Chris.
Yeah, um, I would, I would object to it as well. Uh, Pavinda, Carol. Right, so if we can object to that one.
If you'd like to see the example of a turntable, by the way, go to. Other road, yes.
Yes, other jobs.
Ever seen you working there?
Right. Um, moving on then, two, four, one, eight, eight, zero, which is six, uh, Baker's Close. Uh, household application for the proposed direction of single story front extension, garage conversion to create habitable accommodation, plus changes to the fenestration. Um, as no objections are coming from the makers there, I've got no problem with it, Carol.
I had a problem in terms of design, I'm not sure there's really people there, but um it's you can see the good job, it does stick out or protrude in here. Um, and we'd say it's out of key, but if there was a building in mind, we'd listen to it, well over it. And um, I had some concerns, fellows on the end, certainly not so bad. But um, there's a nice curve moment with ten, eight, six, four, whatever. And then all of a sudden, we've got this um extension sticking up. I don't feel strongly enough to quote you, but.
I'm okay with it.
You see, quite, quite honestly, I would have expected um an objection from number five, at least.
Yes.
And with no objection coming in from that source.
Because it's almost in line with the, that bottom corner of the five, isn't it?
Uh, personally, I see no problems with it.
I'm okay.
But is everyone happy with that conclusion? Yeah, right, thank you. Um, right, number two, four, one, nine, two, six, the land at Headley Road. Um, now this is an application to remove condition thirty two. Um. Of the planning appeal under number two and three, one oh six. Uh, that section thirty two states no deliveries accepted or dispatched from units nine stroke ten between eleven o'clock in the evening and two o'clock seven in the morning. Now bear in mind those units back on to Baker's Place and Miller's Row and Lily May um um block of flats there. I personally would refuse a change.
For me, this cries out to refuse. Absolutely.
I mean, the the appeal, um, the inspectors thought that should be.
That's right.
If they thought that, then that's.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Give me, is this the, is this the um, the aircraft carrying?
Uh.
Behind that.
It's, yeah, it's behind that. It goes right back. There's units nine and ten are right on the um back end of that development.
It is, it is the, it is that property that the condition, I believe, relates to the, the two plans, the two plots at the back.
Yes, yeah, which is the other side of the road.
Yes, yes, but it is, there is those that it relates to, but it is, the application covers that whole, um, that whole area.
Yes, sure. So, yes, um, we refuse.
Because that's a feeder, that's a feeder road, really.
And there's a doctor who's feeding. If the, if the inspector was inclined to put that to all the issues. Then. Um, right, now going on to two, four, one, nine, five, nine, Denmark Avenue. Apparently this has been cancelled.
Okay.
Invalidated, so they didn't provide a back survey. Um, but that must have been in the last couple of days because I only found out today.
So we move on to two, four, one, nine, seven, five, which is eighty three Malone Road. Um, household application for proposed direction of a single story front extension to create porch. Conversion of the existing detached double garage into habitable accommodation along with changes to fenestration plus a drop curve. Um. Now, I actually looked on Google Maps and um there are a couple of objections to this, talking about four cars being constantly parked in front by the tenant. There were two, if you look on Google Maps. Um, parked in front at the time that was taken. Um, but. Comments, please.
Yes, the, the, the comments about four cars parked in the road, it is irrelevant.
Yeah.
Anyone can park there because there's no yellow lines. But what's happened is the um drop curve currently is basically where the A D of road is. Okay, so it's quite some way away from the junction. With the move of what's been planned, that drop curve moves significantly towards the junction. And I think it might well be within the right distance. But I think that is not something to be encouraged. Because if there are cars down that end, you know, that's going to create more problems. At that drop curve. So for me, it's marginal, but I would personally object because of that movement of the drop curve. And it has to happen in order to do all the other stuff.
Yeah, the other thing to point out is the garage is actually being moved, changed into a games room.
That's okay.
And so it, and it won't be connected to the house. But any other comments at all? I'm out. Carol?
No, I think that that can say proximity to the function is one.
So do we approve it with concern over the dropped curve?
I've stated my, my care.
Or do we, do we refuse?
Well, we have a, we have a busy refusal.
Okay, so if we can refuse that one. Um, kids, if you'd like to. Right, so item two, four, one, nine, seven, six, uh, which is thirty three Redding Road. Um, this is household application for proposed erection of a single story rear extension. Conversion of the existing attached garage into habitable accommodation along with changes to fenestration. Now, personally looking at it, um, I didn't see any problems for the properties in Redding Road.
Plenty of room.
There's plenty of room there. Um, and you know, so unless people have got strong objections, I would.
Just a lot, we need people moving in.
Okay, so that can be approved then. Michael, if you just give Keith a shout for me, please, thank you. Robert, I'm sorry, I I keep forgetting you're down the other end there.
It's all right, David, I'm looking at the plans on the side of the screen here. Who else has had a good old nose around Keith's house?
Right, um, we can close the end then. Uh, two, four, two, zero, four, nine, which is the Travis Perkins um site. Says applications vary condition two of planning consent, two, double, three, one, six, eight. For the proposed direction of the building to form a residential care home. Um, condition two's uh refers to uh to the approved details and the variation is to reposition and amend the frontage of the building to accommodate manhole access. I had no problems with that.
It's a practical.
So that can be approved then, Matt, please. And last but not least, um, number two, four, two, zero, five, zero. Uh, that's twenty five Tiger Close. Um, household application for the proposed single story rear extension with a mixed roof of dual pitch and flat roof with skylights including front porch alterations with the change of fenestration. I had no problems with it, but anyone got comments? But that, that can be.
The light on?
Right, so that is the end of the current applications. Um, moving on to the planning decisions, which page seventeen. Um, there are three there that have been approved contrary to our recommendation. That's four Coppers Road, eighty six Ravenspool Drive and twenty seven Fairwater Drive. Um, most of them, you know, fall in line with their own recommendation.
Can I make a request?
So do you may.
When something is contrary to town council recommendation, one way or the other, it would be helpful if you could put a, um, sort of a summary of what our objections were. Because, um. It just didn't help to, well, we did this.
Yeah, I definitely, definitely can, yeah, it's, no, it's absolutely possible. And also what I can do is, um, it's only a little bit more work. I can look back and read off and I do Woking's decision to try and understand what Woking's response was to those comments. That gives, I'll probably give you more information so you'll have an understanding of why that has been um uh contrary. So, yeah, I can do that on the connect.
Right, but moving to ten. I'm not ignoring you on this.
Just to update everybody here, the double day care application, I think we had last time, that's been refused.
Ten through today, yeah, yeah.
One next to just time.
Item seven on the agenda, variation of preference license. Um, which is on page nineteen. Um, this is the Good Companions. And it appears they want to uh be able to use another part of their building for the sale of alcohol. Um, which I presume is the outside bar area. To me, it makes sense that they want to use an outdoor area to be able to sell out the whole. Um, and I would have no objection to it at all.
I promise you.
It's useful sometimes to know that there has been a, an issue with the licence up until now. We don't remember, as I say here. Don't assume there hasn't been.
I think quite honestly, the, since the new owners took over that place, they are trying to make it very family friendly and of course being able to sell alcohol from in the gardens would be beneficial to them. Yeah, right, so moving on to item eight on the agenda. Um, really just. Um, really just for note, uh with tree preservation order, um in, in Aubrey Close. Um, and also, uh, trees at ninety one Reading Road. Transportation and highways, item nine, we've got community speed watch. The situation, um, there is both June Taylor and myself have been somewhat busy and we haven't been able to get together. Um. June is currently on holiday, uh and is not due back until, uh, the first week in September. I will self go on holiday, um, the end of this week and won't be back until the second week in September. But we've got it in mind to get together during that second week. Um, basically, the camera has come back, it's been repaired, it's got a new battery. And it's just a matter of June and I getting that in room. So that we can operate it, um, quickly and efficiently. Um, and then we've already got the areas for the first speed watch sorted out. And it's just a matter of notifying the police of, of the date.
Can you share what those, because I'm not aware of what roads.
We've got two positions authorized both police. One is, um, off at the corner of Oak Drive on Collinsmore Road. Um, because we've had comments from residents about speeding, um, down Collinsmore Road. And the other one, which has been, um, frequently mentioned as speeding, which is Church Road. And we've got permission to have the camera outside the church.
And do we have a process for any residents or councillors to request a new site? Because at the moment, um, what seems to be happening is just you and you are doing everything, which is great.
Yeah.
But we need to get some sort of formal process.
Yeah.
Because, for instance, Collinsmore Road, I know exactly what happened. There's no speeding there because, um, the police have checked it. Uh, the police have checked it at least four times in the last ten years, you know, with the little strips. And, uh, you know, they haven't there. So we really do need to move it to a.
We get a lot of comments from people about speeding. Um, for the hour, two hours we spend monitoring traffic down there, we can clear it up once and for all. When you look at individuals, particularly now we have, um, electric cars. A car, a three litre car will appear to pedestrians to be going faster.
But, sorry to interrupt, but that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, you know, you, you've just reinforced what I'm saying, is you said, you know, we get, so we, I'm assuming is you.
Yeah.
And June. So.
But, yes.
So, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying without discussion or debate, we need to start designing, Matthew does it, sorry, a process and publicising a process for how people can identify or make a recommendation that they want speed watch in road X. But to road, for instance, or, you know, road Y, because at the moment, it's not got that level of professionalism, if you know what I mean? And you can't do it all over again.
Yeah. Um, I mean, that's why we've got the data, um, collector, um.
Yeah, but again, it's not, it's not the, the data collector, it's the process, you know, it's a simple thing. How does a resident say, I think you're speeding on road X? Can you, speed watch team, go and do it? How do they do that?
Just giving an update on that. So last year, when this was kind of really kicking off, we did design on the old website, Ready to Go, a webpage that had basic information about the group and what we do, and a form that people could fill in, which also linked to the information from Thames County Police quite heavily as to what a location would need, so that it would make sure that people were aware that there were uh, um, restrictions to where you could do it. Um, that has been brought across, but we can redesign that on the new website very quickly. So as soon as, as soon as that authorisation is there.
Yeah.
Um, because we've been waiting for the cameras to come back and for, for Asher Brag and Taylor to be ready for that. One, I can design it now and it will be ready as soon as you say you're comfortable with it and you're ready for people to, uh, contact you.
I think.
Because the instant you do one, you've got planned, everybody's saying, oh, how can I get it in my road or whatever? And I'd rather be ahead of the game than behind the game. But if you've done, you've got that, that is fantastic news.
It's ready to go. I think I could even lift it from the old site and just.
Brilliant, brilliant, thank you.
Um, but that's the, the current situation, uh, there. Um. You know, once we've had one, maybe two attempts, then, you know, we can iron all the rest of the other issues out. Um, I, I think anyone got any highways issues? Um, does anyone want to, would you like to mention the separate crossing?
Absolutely, I can mention it. So as part of the, um, conversations we've had in this group about the, um, relocated disabled parking base, um, in the Headley Road car park, um, Wokingham confirmed that the ramp up there, the pavement is too steep, um, and they're going to do some works to make sure that it is a much more appropriate ramp for being able to, to access the pavement. But they said that they would do that as part of work to introduce a pedestrian crossing um at the front of the Oakwood Centre, just pretty much where that pedestrian island is now. Um, they're still in the design phase for that, so they are still designing it, they're still tweaking it, but once that has been confirmed, they're going to try and work all that work into the same thing. So, yeah, that's just to advise you that's going ahead.
Did you ever work out how people are supposed to park their electric cars from the disabled side? I even that run it across the pavement.
Well, they were coming to the electric charging point, just as a normal car.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the electric charging point is still where they were.
Disabled, but the disabled driver can go into any, they don't have to, you could only go in ones that are disabled. So in that scenario, then what I would expect them to do is just drive up as normal and plug it in. Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you look about it, where you've got the, um, display EV charging points.
The other side of it.
They are the other side of the footpath, but the place for, for disabled drivers is on the left hand side of the footpath.
But they can, disabled driver can use the other side of the.
Yeah, but they've got to take the lead.
No, no.
Over the pavement.
Physically, not, not parking the disabled parking, parking the electronic charging, EV charging. Not that one.
Yeah.
That one. No, it would be convenient as a disabled, but I think that's what the answer would be.
Yeah, but those spots are narrow, so it makes it difficult for a disabled person to actually get out of the vehicle.
Just adds to the mess, I would say.
I mean, it would be good if they could put an EV charging point on the left hand side. I'm sure it would bloody be easier than for a disabled person to, um, try and pull the cord across the.
Oh, that, that's not.
But I think, I think probably Wokingham obviously will be wanting to provide, uh, charging points, as many charging points in as many parking, um, uh, car parks as possible by, by locating them in purely disabled spaces. They restrict users to only disabled users, whereas if they are in a, another EV bay, then they can be used by anybody at any time. So that, that's probably their difficulty of that, that balance between, um, the amount of people that can use it. If you put it in a disabled bay, it restricts it.
Right, but. Right, okay. Item ten, community issues. Um, has anyone got any items to raise?
Yeah, David, David, you know, I had, um, a constituent email me today about, um, clothing banks being dumped on various islands and places around the town. Um, particularly there's one at the parade in Brecon Road, um, and it's getting general rubbish put in it as well. Is there any, um, how, how do these clothing banks get put in? Is there any planning applications put in or do they just get dumped where they want to be dumped?
Under the back of Tesco's.
Yeah.
They've been.
Yeah, I mean.
Since the wheeling, for some reason, people seem to not be able to work it out and they're throwing their blue bags. I saw it once afternoon at the back of Iceland as well.
Yeah.
I don't know why people aren't understanding, you can put those in your wheeling, but since, since two weeks ago, it's got worse.
But it's likely at the end of the day.
Yeah, but there's a reason, that's the coincidence of that, when it's all static.
Well, it was suggested that, that things will initially get worse with wheeling.
Till it settles down.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they've as well, uh, bringing to the notice, um, about the increase in flight activity due to the clothing base being full.
Yeah, but how, how, how are they allowed to be put there? I mean, this one is on the grass verge um beside a Wokingham Council litter bin. Um, and it's just sort of been dumped there. I have been sent the photograph. I shall send it to Keith later.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we as a council have been contacted by organisations like that, asking if there's any suitable land to locate them on. I'd imagine they need permission from the landowner to get us on. So if there are any that are located on Wokingham land, I would have imagined there would have been a conversation with Wokingham, but that is something I can try and find out from Wokingham themselves. But anyone else, it'll be up to their private.
The building on that one is interestingly enough, I think, the last few days, they did search of a clothing um bank, or they're called. Um, and I initially went to Headling Road. And the stuff that's there, it's obscene. It was been reported, certainly on Facebook, it was reported about three weeks ago. And it's still, every single clothing thing is full and every space next to it is full to about four or five feet high. Uh, I did find, um, the, uh, the one in the Tesco Express, Hurricane Way. They were pretty empty there, so.
They were bad.
Yeah.
Recently, so they must have.
So the issue, the issue we need, this is, I think, what we need to escalate to, uh, working on, but it's not so much why is it there or whatever, it's why isn't it being regularly emptied?
Monitored.
That's, that's the issue. And if it's not going to be regularly monitored.
Perhaps we can, I'll, I'll point them for information as to how they allocate spots to, um, charities for clothing, um, on council land. Um. Might be that those on, on the car parks, um, which are owned by the council, that all it needs is for Wokingham to write to the charities to say, you empty it once a week. Um, because I get the feeling that many of these have been emptied about once a month. If that. Um.
I'll, I'll, I'll definitely write to Wokingham, see if we can find the person that like looks after that and ask what the current process they manages and, and, yeah, go from there.
Because.
Mate, just walk over.
I'd seen.
And it's, it's horrible. It is absolutely horrible.
I think I have even, I might have seen Wokingham raise it on one of their newsletters. I think as an image of it saying people are flighting. So I think they are aware of it, but at the same time, there's no harm with us finding the right person to be able to raise it and find out what they are doing about it and stuff. So I, I, I'll, I'll do that.
But if it is flighted, then it's the council's duty.
Even if it's not.
On their land.
To clear it.
It's on their land.
Yeah. So we need to know what they are, are doing, but, but, please. Right, item eleven, publications, in, uh, information to note receipt of the promised inclusion newsletter and the ME two club newsletter. Um, item twelve is future gender items. Um. Anyone got anything they can put forward for a future agenda writing? Um, exactly the same, um, published in website. Um. The speed watch is all ready to go once we, um, get the first item out of the way. Um. Then we can start publicising, uh, the events. Anything else people want to publicise? And last but not least, fourteen are enforcement and issues on page uh twenty six, um, looking down there, six Denmark Avenue. Uh, entrance to Ashenbury Park. Um, seventy four Malone Road, forty two Fairwater Drive, ten Manors Road, fifty eight Austin Road, thirty Manors. Uh, problems in Manors Road, um, twenty three Tippins and Crockenwell Road. Um, potential breaches.
Check on the force and poses, trying to be, what's missing, I don't know, what's my, I thought. Playing the lesser, so no notice, no notice, I'm not sure.
I've been there.
Extending on to the, it's a suspense.
What's that mean?
Well.
One activity though.
That'll be a notice, wouldn't it? But you don't need to display a notice anymore. We've had it down for about ten years.
Yeah, then, then, right.
And I would guess extending on to the highway, I would imagine.
Yeah, they're looking down the closures. First row, the application submitted, voluntary compliance on thirty three Collinsmore Lane. But there's no breach. Um, well. The next lesson, breach. But. Yeah, all the others are no breach. Um.
I will just say on that one, that is exact, one that looks like information is exactly what's been sent from Wokingham. It's, 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 I, I, yeah, um, we've, we've changed, since my change of role, um, Kieran now helps support pulling this information together. So, um, it's, but it is, it is copied and pasted exactly as they've put it. Yeah, so sorry that I didn't spot that. I'll, I'll check in future.
So other than that, that is the end of tonight's meeting. I thank you very much. Um.